Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Quincy School Committee meeting for Wednesday, September 11th. Roll call, Superintendent?
Mr. Begoli.
President.
Mrs. Gail.
President.
Mr. Guttrow.
President.
Mrs. Hugley.
President.
Mrs. Levo.
President.
Mr. Curio.
President.
And Mayor.
President.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take a moment for immemoriam. Mayor Koch.
Today, as we all know, is the anniversary date of 9/11. It's hard to believe 23 years ago today, that horrific act of terrorism greatly changed this nation. None of our students would remember that day. That's how long ago it was now. But I think it's important that we take a moment. There were two Quincy people that were killed that day, well, and 200 Massachusetts people killed that day, and hundreds of first responders going in to try to rescue people. So I'd just ask everyone to take a moment of silence in their memory. Thank you. Superintendent?
Thank you. Tonight, we have three immemoriums. If you could please keep me at thoughts and prayers. The following Quincy Public Schools staff members and their families, and then we have an additional city of Quincy employee that Mr. Guttrow would like to recognize. First, William Truffoni. He taught social studies at the elementary, middle, and high school levels for 14 years, and was later a substitute teacher for five years. And next is Esther Madden. She was a teacher's aide at Lincoln Hancock for eight years. And at this time, I turn the memoriam over to Mr. Guttrow, who would like to remember a city of Quincy employee by the name of Mr. Michael Dougherty.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I'd like to just extend our thoughts and prayers to the Dougherty family on the untimely passing of Michael Dougherty. Michael worked for the city of Quincy in a variety of functions. He was a master electrician. He worked many years for Local 103, but he worked in the city of Quincy. You would often see him in a bucket truck, putting up the Christmas lights, or working on projects around the city, or on the schoolyards. Was a terrific guy with an amazing sense of humor and left a real legacy. He was a good person, so please keep him in your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we'll go to open forum, which is an opportunity for community input regarding the Quincy Public Schools. Community in this context is defined as a resident of the city of Quincy, a parent of a student who attends Quincy Public Schools, or an employee of the Quincy Public Schools. Non-community persons not permitted to speak at open forum may submit written statements to the school committee. After giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than four minutes to the school committee. An individual may not exchange their time or yield to others. Interested parties may also submit written statements to QSC Open Forum at quinsypublicschools.com. Do we have anyone here for public forum? Hi.
Hi, I'm Kristy Hogan. I live at Ten Bowes Avenue in Quincy. I also have a... I have huge anxiety about public speaking, so I'm going to tell you right off there. Big anxiety. But I have a son who's a sophomore at Quincy High School, and my daughter graduated last year. She was here for the plumbing award, and she was the back piper at the graduation ceremony. So that was my daughter. I'm coming today because I had the opportunity to be at the last school committee meeting this year, because my daughter was receiving an award with other seniors there and being recognized. And I heard something, because I stayed and sat through the rest of the school committee meeting, and I heard something that kind of bothered me. So I felt the need to kind of come and share and explain why it kind of bothered me. So one of the motions that came up was to limit the time of the folks coming up and speaking in the open forum. And the part that really kind of bothered me more was the not wanting to read the submissions that came in via email in open forum. And the reason that bothered me is, and I'm going to read a little bit, because, again, public anxiety. Quincy Public Schools has made great efforts and strides towards improving the practices of equity and inclusion in the school system, in the parent advisory councils, and I'd really like the school committee to consider that as well. Not all parents have the luxury of being able to attend school committee meetings in person, but that doesn't make their opinions or their input any less valuable. The ability to submit items to be read at the open forum opens up the option for parents who may work, have other commitments, have childcare issues during the meeting times. It also gives a voice to the parents whose primary language may not be English, to be able to use translation services or to share their thoughts, or who may need a bit more time to gather their thoughts together, to be able to express themselves and organize their words to get their point across. I heard the suggestion to have these submissions posted on the website ahead of the meeting to give the opportunity for community members to review if they so choose. But in my humble opinion, that's not good enough. The parents and the overall community of Quincy voted all of you in to these positions, and they're entrusting you to make critical decisions about the educational policies and funding of our public school systems and its programs. I feel that the least you can do is have the courtesy to ensure that if one of those constituents takes the time to share their thoughts with you via an email submission or in person, that you do the courtesy of listening to them and making sure that all members of the school committee have heard what they have to say. That's it. So I urge you to think about that as you vote on that today. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Amy Tan, 86, Grandview Ave. So I'm a senior at North, and I'm a school committee representative, but not currently one. Or like, well, I am currently one, but not currently. Yeah. So I do a lot of things, so not just going to list off points of my resume, but I play soccer, I do track, I'm quiz bowl captain. Did I lose? No. MHS president. I do band, jazz band. I'm a section leader in the band. But I guess what I'm saying is that I don't really have a lot of time, and I feel like I represent a lot of my peers when I'm saying that. A lot of us obviously don't have time to come to these meetings, and we have opinions and we have voices, and we feel that we want to have a voice and an actual voice and feel our words being read. And I think not reading the email submissions is something that will deprive us of that voice. And I recognize that your time is very important, and that your time is something that we also view as important, but we also feel that we deserve a voice. So when we have, like, soccer games, or if we have other commitments on Wednesday evenings, and we can, I recognize that you're not taking away our ability to submit something, but rather giving us sort of making a new, diverting what we're submitting from being read into being just simply posted. And I think I would like to voice my opposition, because I think we deserve a voice at the table and a real voice. And I think also cutting down open forum time from four to three minutes is something that, I guess, it depends on, for me, I like to speak from my mind, if you can't tell. And so when you're cutting down the time, it kind of takes, we can still say whatever we wanted to say in four minutes and three minutes, but I guess it takes away some of the message and some of the clarity that might have came from those four minutes. And I guess, to me, a minute isn't that significant, and I know that minutes add up, and that creates, that can go into hours. But overall, I think it would just be great if we voted against this proposition. So, thank you.
Anyone else like to get up and speak? We're all set. Okay, thank you. Oh, we have some emails to read. Mrs. Owens.
So there were eight letters submitted on the same topic, about the open forum policy. I'm just going to read them in the order they were submitted. The first one is from Maria Mulligan. Members of the school committee, I hope this email finds you well, and that over the summer break, you contemplated the suggestions I offered at the June 12 meeting regarding the proposed changes to open forum attached for your reference. Recall, I suggested that this body explore offering listening sessions with the school community separate from school committee meetings to foster a more open, welcoming, and collaborative way to involve them in decision-making. I strongly believe that embracing constructive feedback from those who experience the impact of their learning environment firsthand is the best way to discover valuable insights, different perspectives, and innovative solutions while strengthening relationships, the fruit of a democratic process. I realize this is different from what you might be used to. Change is sometimes hard, but if we don't try something new, then we won't grow and evolve together as a community. Instead of limiting pathways for civic expression in the open forum, let's give listening sessions a try to see where they take us. Please deliberate this idea in public during this meeting. The second letter is from Amy Sorensen-Aload. Dear members of the QPS School Committee, I have two children enrolled in Quincy Public Schools. I am aware of the vote tonight regarding no longer reading emails and letters, just like this one, as part of open forum at school committee meetings, and to reduce the speaking time down from four to three minutes. The only reason I'm not at the meeting tonight to tell you this in person is because I have a personal appointment that I cannot miss. Other times, I've missed these meetings because of work or family responsibilities. It is impossible to be two places at the same time physically, but being able to submit a letter via email that is read out loud still allows me to have a voice during these proceedings. My voice and opinion, and those of the rest of your constituents, certainly mattered to you when you needed votes. Our votes put you in the seats you're occupying today, in some cases, seats you've occupied for many years. Your responsibility as elected representatives of the QPS School Committee is in service to our communities and our families. You are obligated to hear us when it comes to issues big and small, so you can learn about and understand what is important to us and represent us accurately. It is not enough to passively post emails and letters on a website that may not be viewed by anyone, including yourselves. If we can no longer have letters and emails read at open forum, and you reduce our time to speaking down to three minutes, you are closing your minds and your ears to your constituents. You will be limiting our right to participate in due public process proceedings that have a direct impact on us and our families. You will be reducing and eliminating our voices from the public record. Please continue to let us participate, whether we are there in person or not, and maintain the four minutes of speaking time. Let our voices be heard. This next letter is from Maggie McKee. Dear school committee members, I am writing to thank you for allowing the public to comment during your meetings, and for the comments of those who cannot make it to your meetings to be read out loud during open forum. Democracy gets stronger when more people participate in it, and when elected leaders listen to the people they represent. The proposed changes to open forum would not strengthen democracy. Eliminating the reading of letters means that parents and community members who do not have the time or money to be able to attend meetings in person will not be heard by the collective committee. And reducing the amount of time that people can speak at school committee meetings from four minutes to three would send a message that school committee members have more important things to do than listen to community members who make the effort to attend the meeting in person. Is that really the message the school committee wants to send? Please keep open forum rules as they are now. Thank you. This letter is from Jill Saban. Dear school committee members, I am writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed changes to the open forum policies, which would limit participation to in-person speakers only and reduce speaking time from four minutes to three. These changes would significantly hinder community engagement and stifle the voices of concerned parents, students, staff, and citizens who are deeply invested in the success of our school district. First, limiting open forum to in-person participation excludes a large segment of our community who may not have the ability to attend meetings in person due to work schedules, childcare responsibilities, transportation challenges, or health concerns. Virtual participation has been a critical tool for fostering greater inclusion and accessibility in public discourse, and removing that option sends the wrong message about the value we place on diverse perspectives. Especially in this digital age, we should be working toward expanding access to public meetings, not restricting it. Second, reducing speaking time from four minutes to three further curtails the opportunity for meaningful dialogue. Many issues affecting our schools are complex, and cutting a speaker's time by a full minute significantly limits their ability to provide thoughtful, well-rounded input. This reduction would likely discourage community members from speaking at all, thereby reducing the richness and diversity of opinions that help guide decision-making. Our school district has prided itself on transparency, community involvement, and responsiveness to the needs of its stakeholders. The proposed changes directly undermine those values. I urge you to reconsider these modifications and instead seek ways to increase public participation and engagement. I respectfully ask that you vote against this proposal and continue to foster an open, inclusive, and accessible forum for all voices in our community. Thank you for your time and consideration. The next letter is from Judy Brahms. School committee members, please do not stop reading aloud letters sent to you by the public. Not everyone can attend meetings, but would still like their voices heard. Although I rarely attend meetings anymore, I did so faithfully when my children were Quincy Public Schools students. I was fortunate that my husband was home, and that freed me up to attend. Again, not everyone was that fortunate, but why should folks be uninformed because they can't attend? Also, why would you shorten speaking time of citizens who come to you, come to address you with their concerns? They are taking time away from their families, work, interests, to share their views with you. Please do not disrespect them. This email is from Christie DiPaolo. My name, my name is Christie Di... I'm sorry. Did you, the person who read? No, this is somebody else.
No, I'm Kristy Hogan.
Okay. My name is Christie DiPaolo, 45, Weston Ave. I am reaching out regarding the vote that will take place tonight at the school committee meeting. Regarding removing the ability to have voices heard during open forum unless in person does not take into consideration the complex and diverse needs of our city. There are caregivers who can't get away to attend in person. There are chronically ill family members who can't safely attend, or just illness in general. There is a large population of non-English speakers that may need to write email letters because it can be easily translated. This is definitely in need in my Lincoln Hancock and Southwest communities, where we have over 30 countries represented. Students may want to speak up, and the letter feels safer than standing at a mic in front of adults. The list of reasons could go on and on. We are trying to show up for our children the best we can, and taking away, a way for families to communicate is not the right approach. In addition, three minutes isn't a lot of time, especially if you have never spoken in front of people. It may take some time to gather your train of thought, and before you know it, time is up. The school committee is here to support the needs of our kids. Parents shouldn't be pushed out and limited to how and when they can speak. Our voices as parents and caregivers are the most important. This letter is from Shannon Jackson. I have two children currently in the Quincy Public School system. I'm writing about the removing the ability to have voices heard during open forum unless in person. I know plenty of families that work multiple jobs and don't have childcare, but would love to have their voices heard. The last letter is from Susan Chinson. Greetings. I understand that there's a proposal to change the protocols for open forum regarding the length of time to speak and how letters submitted in advance will be shared. I'm concerned about the impact this may have on civic engagement for residents of Quincy, especially those that are not able to attend in person due to work, family, or health issues. If residents, community members, are taking the time to send comments, feedback in without them being read during open forum, there should still be a process for these letters to be formally connected, attached, registered to the official meeting minutes or record, and still be recognized during open forum. In addition to being posted online, I encourage the council to consider at a minimum having the clerk read the names and subject memo line, perhaps with a limit, like 172 characters, of the letters, emails that have been submitted in advance. This will at least allow attendees and council members an understanding of the volume of community response with an indication of the issue they are concerned with. Less than this would further marginalize resident concerns and discourage civic participation.
Thank you, Mrs. Owens. Let's move on to superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I hope everyone enjoyed their summer break. Welcome back. And my first item on the agenda is the Welcome Back to School update.
In the last week, Quincy Public Schools has welcomed over 1,000 new students at all grades, including our youngest students in pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. Preliminary district enrollment is currently at 9,915, with student registrations continuing at school sites and central registration. October 1st enrollment data and class size will be shared at the October 9th school committee meeting. I do want to just touch on some security issues. The security of our students, of course, and our staff is uppermost on our minds, especially in light of recent events in other states. I just want to assure the community and the members of this committee that school staff are reminded of safety protocols during opening day. Staff meetings, as this is a collaborative school community effort, were also held, as well as school assemblies, including discussions with students on safety, and when they should properly report to a trusted adult. So these are part of our security protocols that we do every year in the beginning of the school year. Certainly with most recent events, we wanted to highlight that for you and the community, that we are working with the entire community to ensure the safety of our students and our staff. I also do want to touch upon some of the transportation challenges that we are facing with regard to our school buses, both our internal school buses and some of our vending issues. So I just want to take this opportunity to kind of review this with the community and with the members of this committee. As you know, there is a nationwide shortage of bus drivers, so it's not just Massachusetts, but across the country. Certainly, the South Shore Superintendent's Group that I'm a member with, this is one of the top concerns for all the superintendents in the South Shore area, as well as throughout the state. But with specifically regarding Quincy, we're working extremely hard to make sure that all of our students are transported to school, number one, safely, and also, to the best of our ability, as timely as possible. Just so that you know, we are currently down in Quincy 22 drivers since the end of COVID, which is not great. And so that then requires us to look to other sources to assist in transporting our students safely and timely to school. For our information, we have approximately 590 students on large buses that we transport daily, and approximately 419 students on our QPS mini-buses, which are populated mainly by our special education students who require transportation. These numbers increase every day as additional students enroll for transportation in the district. Because of the shortage of drivers that we are currently facing, we had to vend out seven large bus routes to a company named First Student. I'm sure you're very familiar with it. They provide student transportation services throughout the state. And of course, we had to do this in order to meet our transportation needs in the district. Without doing this, we certainly would not be able to transport all of the students that we transport, particularly the 590 students who are on these large buses. We opted to vend the large buses over the mini-buses because of a 50% cost difference. It would have cost us 50% more to vend the mini-buses to a company like First Student because of the nature of the billing that is associated with per pupil billing, as opposed to the billing of the use of large buses. Again, that would be a 50% cost to the district increase. Of course, the need to vend our large buses was communicated to all schools and parents, and of course, we're in constant communication with our principals as well. And as you know, the safety of our students has and always will be our top priority as we monitor the ongoing transportation process of getting our students, first of all, safely to school, but also timely to school. And it's that timely piece that, since school began, that we have been having difficulty with. Today, we saw some significant improvements, and I'll talk about why we saw improvements in transportation today. Certainly, the first day of school was challenging, as it always is, because we have new students arriving. We have, we have obviously the change in our bus routes with the seven bus routes being sent to First Student. We have new parents to the district, and so obviously, communication is always key. So historically, we always have some bumps in the road the first week or two in regard to transportation, and things settle down. So we're hopeful that that will happen. But I just want to review with you some of the things that we've been doing to get our students safely to school and on time, and some of the initiatives that we've implemented have really helped today, that's for sure. Again, I had mentioned that the first day was very difficult. We had a string of very good days, with some, obviously, delays for various reasons, including traffic delays, accidents, students, or parents not being at the bus stop when the drop is to occur, so that requires the bus to take the student back to the school. But I do want to just review with you some of the things that we're doing to help improve the timeliness of our buses, and this will be an ongoing effort, and I'm hoping that we will have consistency and timeliness, you know, as we move forward. So as I said, we've identified a number of areas that were problematic in delaying not only the pickup of students, but also the drop-off of students, and this includes, obviously, weekly meetings with First Student. We had a meeting today, which was very productive with First Student, and I'll talk a little bit about that. We've added QPS managerial staff to all of the buses, and in particular, the problematic buses, and we've seen a big improvement in that today as well. All First Student drivers now have radios, and of course, they always had GPS, so we can track them wherever they are, or First Student can, and then give us a report as to where the, where the seven buses are at all times, which is actually very helpful, and it also helps us identify where the problems are occurring with regard to pickup and drop-off, and so we can identify those particular areas and focus in on making corrections to those particular areas. A huge thing that has helped so far that we've seen is having school staff earlier and ready to go and to receive our students as soon as the buses arrive and get them off the buses. So when the buses arrive, the buses don't have to wait for an adult to be present to remove the students from the bus, but the staff will be present early to remove the students from the bus, so that then they can go to the next round of pickups and drop-offs at the next school. So we've seen some very big improvement in that, and I've got to thank all of our staff in those early schools who are getting out there earlier to make sure that students are getting off the buses as safely and efficiently as possible, particularly our principals, who are there to assist, as well as our assistant principals. And then, of course, making sure students are getting off at the correct drop-off location has been very, very important. And of course, we're doing that with allocating staff, but also establishing peer connections with other students, and that has been extremely helpful as well. We've had some incidents earlier on where, you know, students may have fallen asleep and have not gotten off at their stop and have missed the stop, and then, obviously, the bus either has to go back to that stop or take the student back to the school. So we're hoping that we have a good handle on that. And between the adults on the bus and the peer connections that we're making, that has seemed to resolve those issues so far. Of course, assisting with rerouting buses around accidents and traffic delays is also something that the entire transportation office is helping with, as well as the people who are on the buses assisting the driver. And of course, as the drivers become more and more used to the routes, it will become more and more efficient as time goes on, and that's why we're hoping that within the next week or so, we'll see improvements in efficiency, just because of the familiarity with those buses. But a But certainly, if we do have an absence because of illness or some other reason of a First Student driver, we have gotten agreement by First Student to call us, no matter how early in the morning it is, and we'll make sure that someone from QPS management is placed on that bus to help the new driver navigate the route, so that there isn't any unnecessary delays. And of course, First Student has agreed to do that, so we're hoping that will relieve some of the delays as well. Of course, there are unavoidable issues related to traffic accidents and related traffic slowdowns, but again, we're working with First Student and their GPS technology to help reroute, as well as the adults on the bus to reroute and get back on track and get around those accidents and slowdowns. Of course, we have to communicate with parents to make sure that they are consistently at the bus stops on time, so that when the drops happen, we don't have to hold a student on the bus and then bring that student back to the school and then move on to the next stop. That has been causing some significant delays. Again, we're working with parents to make sure that those are minimized to as much as possible. And lastly, I have to thank Mr. Drakey, Mr. Segala, Larry Tagliari, Anne Larson-White, Paul Mer, our drivers, our monitors, our paraprofessionals and custodial staff, all of these staff members, as well as all the members of the SLT, are working together to iron out the difficulties with regard to transportation. Today was a successful day. We had one route that was delayed, again, because of a student that was not able to get off the bus because the parent wasn't present, but we did deal with that. And we have assurances moving forward that the parent will be present for that. But all of these issues, and every day is different, but we're working, and I want you to know that everyone in the SLT and all the staff that I mentioned, and thank for their hard work, are working to make sure that our transportation is safe and also efficient and timely for our students. And I just wanted you to know the overview of what we've been dealing with since school started and prior to school. And I have to thank also the team administrators who worked with Julie Graham and Dr. Perkins and other SLT staff in the beginning of the school year to work out all the special education routes as well. That helped those routes become more efficient as the school year started. Obviously, we have constantly work to do in this area, and we're dedicated to improving the transportation for all of our students, and we'll continue to work at it. So I'll just stop there in case you have any questions.
Mrs. Partios.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. I appreciate that update. We had talked about bringing kind of an update tonight. I don't know if you already were planning to do that, but I know I received a lot of phone calls in the first couple of days, and a lot of parents that just were a little scared about where their kiddos were, you know, coming off. So those delays definitely were impactful, but that was a very good update, very sensitive. It sounds like you guys have done a lot of work. So thank you. I know you have taken the lead on that, and Mike Drakey on the Transportation Department, Dr. Perkins, everybody that's been focusing on that, thank you. It really does matter for those, especially those younger kiddos, where, you know, it's scary to kind of not know kind of where your kiddos are. I just had one quick question. Are the, so for the routes that First Student are on, is it the same driver for those routes? Or I assume they have a pool of a lot of drivers. Do we get the same group of drivers every time?
Yes, that was, we, in our negotiations with First Student, for years, we had bus rotation within the district, and we fought very hard with the union to eliminate bus rotation, so that the same driver was on that route consistently. And we certainly didn't want to give that up when we took on First Student. So we have assurances by First Student that unless there is an illness or unexpected absence, the driver will be the same driver for that route moving forward.
Okay.
Again, for that consistency.
Right, and they get to know the kids.
And they get to know the roots.
Right, exactly.
And they get to know the neighborhoods, so if they have to transition away from an accident or something, they become more and more confident in doing that and getting back on track if there is an accident or some kind of traffic interference or something like that.
That's great. Thank you, and thank you for communicating with parents as much as you can on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank you also. I have one quick question. Some of the confusion is, I'm not talking about parents that I've talked to, but just people in the community. Why is this Zavarian Brothers bus going up and down our streets in Rockland?
Yes.
So First Student usually sends First Student buses.
Yes.
And we have buses that say they're other schools. Did the parents know that was going to happen?
Yes, so that's a great question. I should have addressed that, because that did come up. So First Student is a vendor to, as I said, a number of different communities. They're in the process of re-lining all of our eight buses, the seven plus one reserve in case one breaks down. But all of our eight buses will just say First Student on it, but also have an indication that it's a Quincy Public School bus route. We just contracted with them too late for them to change the striping, and we couldn't contract with them until we did, because they had to actually find and build the drivers and the routes for us, and they couldn't commit to us until that was done. So they were fortunately able to do that, and now the next process is to re-stripe the buses that'll say First Student, Quincy Public Schools.
Excellent, excellent. A great job turning that over in such a short time, and thank you to the people in the management team who really assisted with that.
Thank you. Next is, just to want to recognize our student representatives who were elected. There are six of them. They will begin next session. We had our orientation this week with a luncheon for our six students, and thank you, Amy. I know Amy is one of those six students. The schedule for each one of those students is before you, so you'll see that it is evenly distributed among the elected students. And we welcome our students and thank them for serving in such a prestigious role, and we welcome their feedback as well. And again, the schedule is before you at your places. Next is the fall open house events. The calendar of events was shared, is shared with the school committee at your places. These events are a great opportunity for families to meet classroom teachers, learn about curriculum and academic expectations, and how to become more involved in the school community. So it certainly would encourage as many parents as possible to attend these events. They're great events, and you also get to meet other parents, too, which is helpful for our parent community. Yes, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Question on the student representative.
Yes.
Not a question, but a comment. One of the things we've been trying to do for years is to develop our student advisory committee, and that's a regulation of the Department of Education, and we haven't had any luck. It looks to me like you have put together that group.
Yes.
But now we have to go out and meet with those people every other month to fulfill our responsibilities.
Yep.
So at least two members of the school committee, one or two members should be going out and meeting with those three students from each school.
Yes.
Just to hear their voices at some point in time, coming to them.
Yes.
Is what we're supposed to be doing.
That's the next step, and we'll organize that and.
Thank you.
Get you some dates that work for the committee members.
And for them.
Yeah, for them.
I'd be happy to go with Mrs. Lebo.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. We'll get those dates out to you.
Thank you so much.
Proposed dates. Next is the Quincy Art Association will be hosting an art show, Celebrate Quincy, at the Q Arts Gallery on Hancock Street that features artwork from over 300 students representing all elementary, middle, and high schools in the Quincy Public Schools, as well as artwork by Quincy Public School art teachers. This is the second in a three-year art project celebrating Quincy 400. It'll be Quincy's 400th anniversary from 1625 to 2025, so very excited about that. A reception will be held on Sunday, September 15th, from noon to 3:00 PM, and all are invited to attend. The exhibit will open during regular Q Arts gallery hours through October 12th. Special thanks to Dan and Jessica Myers for their efforts and advocacy of our students' creativity, and the Quincy Art Association for their support of the young artists of Quincy for many years. So with that, that ends the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Now, I'll move on to old business. First on the agenda is the revision of Policy Book Section 2.3.3, Subcommittee of the School Committee. Mr. Guttrow.
Madam Vice Chair, this was prompted by the Mass Association of School Committees, as folks might recall, who advised us that according to the open meeting law, all members, all committee members could not attend subcommittee meetings on which they are not a member. That prompted us to have a policy committee meeting back last spring, and the choice for us was retain the subcommittees as they exist and make changes or do everything before the full committee. So we had a discussion in retaining the subcommittees with some conditions. This is eligible for a vote tonight, and so we need a motion and a second to open it up for discussion.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion to accept, second by Mrs. Lebo. We're open for a roll call vote?
Any discussion on the motion?
Any discussion, no? Yes, yes would be to approve. Yes.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Partios?
Yes.
Mayor Koch?
Okay, motion passes. Next is the revision of Policy Book Section 2.410, Public Participation in School Committee Meetings. Mr. Guttrow.
Madam Vice Chair, as you know, this was introduced by Mrs. Lebo last May, revisiting policies adopted during the pandemic, as we've done in other cases. So this requires a motion and a second to allow for further discussion.
Motion to accept.
Motion, Mrs. Hubley, second. Mr. Begoli. Motion to discuss. And Mrs. Partios.
On the motion.
Yep.
Thank you. So we've, we introduced this before, this was introduced in the summer before our summer break, and I sort of just kind of keep coming back to it over the summer and just thinking about it. And I just keep coming back to transparency, equity, and inclusion whenever I think about it. And, you know, we say that those things are priorities in our district, that our teachers strive for these things in their classrooms, our principals, every time they come before us to present their school improvement plans. Those are filled with details of how they're promoting and fostering transparency, equity, and inclusion in their buildings. The superintendent and his leadership team, they work hard to engage with families and regularly update us on all the ways they're trying to be ever more transparent, equitable, and inclusive. And it seems like where we also need to do our part to show that we value those items as well in this committee. Our district is full of families and students and staff who can't physically come to our meetings. Parents and caregivers wishing to speak may have non-traditional work hours, lack of childcare, transportation issues, language barriers, anxiety related to public speaking, or evening commitments. Students who want to speak at open forum have homework, after-school activities, after-school jobs. And it's a lot to ask our QPS teachers and staff who may want to speak at open forum to stick around until 6:30 at night when we have our meetings, after starting their day at 6:00 AM in our buildings. So email is a very good alternative in those situations, and every one of those stakeholders brings a different experience and perspective on our school district that I want to hear. And while I appreciate that any emails would be posted online, the authors have no guarantee that all of the members will read and hear their concerns. And also, the public won't have the benefit of hearing the concern shared in those emails. That all decreases the transparency of the issues that we're discussing and voting on. It prevents the public from understanding the full range of reasons why we're voting how we are and making the decisions we do. So this proposal would limit who we hear from publicly on the record to only those people who have the means and ability to get to the meetings in person. And how is that showing that we, as a school committee, value equity and inclusivity? This is not a question of what we can do by law, it's a question of what we should do. Legally, we can make this change to open forum, but why do we want to? In all my years of attending school committee meetings, I've rarely seen any of these open forum sessions go longer than a few minutes. And the issues that do cause those longer meetings are actually very complex, and we really need to hear from the public and the stakeholders on those issues, because we don't always have all the information, and we don't have all the answers on this side of the table. So just to wrap up, I just want to say how uncomfortable I am with any effort that we put forward that would limit any opportunities for us to learn about the issues that people are having in our school district. I don't see the need to do this. I don't like the message it sends to the public, and I want to ensure that all of our stakeholders have their concerns heard on the record, regardless of their ability to get here physically in front of a microphone. So I will be strongly voting no on this proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Guttrow.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Like deliberative bodies across the city, across the state, across the country, around the world, during COVID, we changed a lot of policies out of necessity. And I think it's the right thing to do, to revisit policies and look at policies and see what we need to change back and what we need to keep. One of the things that I fell strongly about was that our subcommittee meetings stay on QA TV. I know we discussed that, and I think there's value to having the subcommittee meetings on QA TV. So this was one that was brought forward. I listened to the parents, to the residents, to the students in the spring. I heard from a lot of folks over the course of the summer on this, that they not only want their letters read, but heard out loud. And so, and those that watch on QA TV, I think, value hearing those letters out loud and hearing the voice of the folks. So it's clear to me, or at least it's become clear to me over the course of the summer, that the parents, the students, the residents wish to continue to have their voices heard and not just read. And we've changed, and we've kept a lot of policies in the wake of COVID. We call them COVID keepers, and I've come to the conclusion that this is a policy worth keeping, so I too will vote no against changing the policy.
Okay. Any other discussion?
May.
I'd just like to make a few remarks. Number one is, I see the reference a number of times to democracy. We are a republic. We're democratic formal government, but we're a republic with elective formal government. When I am out and about, and I am out and about everywhere, in the city, at events everywhere, people constantly engage me on issues. I get emails every day, phone calls, visits every day. I don't know why people think they have to wait for a school committee meeting to bring an issue forward. You don't have to wait for a school committee meeting. You can reach out to us individually. The superintendent and his team are open. They meet with parents, they meet with families on these issues. So, you know, I'd like to make that comment, that folks, you don't have to wait for a school committee. Reach out to us. We're available. The other thing I just mentioned on the time thing, one of the most famous speeches in history by Abraham Lincoln was two minutes long. I think he can get a point across within three minutes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Ready for a roll call?
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
No.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Partios?
No.
Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, thank you. New business, QPS Summer Review. Ms. Leary, Mr. Marani, Ms. Quinn, and Ms. Vaughn.
Good evening, everybody. Vice Chair Cahill, school committee members, Mayor Koch, Superintendent Mulvey, the members of SLT behind me. Lot, a lot happening this summer. It was a very busy, very productive summer. Certainly good to be back into the swing of things, getting into the swing of things for the school year, but before we do, of course, it's warranted some time today to just talk a little bit about all the success we had within summer programming. I want to thank Ms. Vaughn, Ms. Quinn, Ms. Leary here with me. They're going to help me share all the great offerings, along with professional development that took place this summer. So we'll try and be brief, but there's a lot to share. Just a couple of things to highlight. We had a total of 16 programs. We did see an increase in summer enrollment. So our figure last year was 1,742 students. When we finalized the numbers and looked at the enrollment for this summer, we landed on 1,822 students. So we saw a slight increase in our summer programming enrollment. It's always encouraging. It shows us that there's interest among the students to continue to participate, which obviously is important to us. Total educators, this includes paraprofessionals, you know, different staff members in addition to the classroom teachers, but 279 staff members supported and made possible these programs. And the timeline across all the programs, the earliest was June 24th start through August 9th. So regardless of the program a student may have participated in, still plenty of time over the summer to also relax and get that vacation time that they deserve and certainly earn. and certainly earn. So with that, I'm going to hand over the elementary programming to Ms. Quinn.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. And I need to start by saying that the Bridge to Reading and Math Program is definitely near and dear to my heart. I was a teacher in this program back when it was simply Bridge to Reading. And for five years now, I've been co-facilitator. And for the last two, I've had the pleasure of sharing that job with Justine Sullivan. This summer, we welcomed 167 rising first to fifth graders at the Marshall School. The program is geared to help students who need a boost to get ready for their next grade level. Students from across the district are identified and invited to participate. Teachers use Lexia and ST Math, both of which offered targeted lessons and games to help students learn foundational skills. Once a week, students participated in the Science of Gardening, where they got their hands dirty planting and weeding. And each class participated in a session with Farmer Grace from Holly Hill Farm. New to the schedule this year was Fit Math. This is where physical education and math class collide. One activity was a take on Hungry Hungry Hippos, where students rushed to collect different colored beanbags, only to later find out their value and work together to calculate which team had the highest total. All the students who attended the Marshall School this summer, which included Camp Can Do, language development classes, and TK, participated in Fit Math. And they all also enjoyed a visit from Joe's Crazy Critters. Justine and I also had the pleasure of facilitating Camp Can Do. Throughout the four weeks, 104 Level 1 rising first to fifth grade English learners worked on phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension skills. The summer theme ran through many of the activities from reviewing beach safety, learning about sea creatures, and writing about things that the students had done over vacation. The picture at the top of this slide shows students showing off their writing assignments. And we were fortunate to once again have a strong staff with us at the Marshall School. In addition to the teachers, support from parents and family, members of the family liaison team was priceless. Whether they were helping students find their teacher on the first morning, making sure students got on the correct bus in the afternoon, calling parents when students were absent, or assisting in a classroom. Without their support, the programs would not have run as smoothly. And now I'll turn over to Bridget Vaughn, who'll continue with some of the program updates.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to speak on behalf of the Quest for Learning Program. So this summer, Beechwood Knoll once again came alive with energy and enthusiasm as we welcomed 295 students to the Summer Quest Program. As our largest summer initiative, it brought together first through fifth graders from across all schools for four weeks of immersive learning. Each day, students engage in a variety of activities designed to enhance their skills in reading, math, and STEAM, with teachers creating experiences focused on collaboration, hands-on learning, and academic growth. In reading, teachers thoughtfully incorporated titles from the Quincy Public Schools Suggested Summer Reading List, which centered around themes of diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. Students participated in dynamic book talks, sharpening their comprehension and analytical skills by focusing on key story elements. Interactive digital literacy tools, including the CKLA platform and Lexia program, provided differentiated phonics instruction, ensuring that students could progress at their own pace while developing foundational literacy skills. The STEAM curriculum was an undeniable highlight, sparking excitement and creativity amongst students. Through engaging activities in science, technology, engineering, art, and math, students tackled challenges like building tinfoil boats, constructing bridges, designing race cars, and coding. These tasks encouraged both independent problem solving and teamwork, as students collaborated and competed in hands-on projects that nurtured their design thinking and creativity. The combination of fun and learning was evident through the smiles and laughter that filled each day. In addition to academic pursuits, students also enjoyed physical education classes twice a week, alternating between outdoor fields and our indoor gym space. These sessions not only promoted physical fitness, but also fostered new friendships and teamwork as students participated in various fun activities. Furthermore, social and emotional learning was a key component of the program. Led by our school psychologist, students explored pro-social skills through discussions and games based on the Open Parachute Curriculum. Community circles provided a platform for meaningful conversations, helping students build emotional resilience and develop skills that will support them as they transition into this school year. The success of Summer Quest Program would not have been possible without the dedication of our 34 staff members and two facilitators, whom I refer to as our rock star facilitators, Megan Healy and Laurel Hendrickson. Their hard work ensured that every student had a positive enriching experience. The laughter, joy, and sense of achievement that resonated through Beechwood Knoll each day is a testament to the incredible impact that this program has on our students. And next, I'm going to talk about the summer program at Snug Harbor Elementary. Snug Harbor, students had an exciting and enriching summer filled with four weeks of hands-on STEM activities. Working together, they designed and built roller coasters, tunnels, lanterns, egg drop contraptions, and bridges, engaging their creativity and problem-solving skills throughout the process. In addition to STEM projects, students participated in math and reading, lessons tailored to their grade levels, with each week featuring an exciting different theme. These weekly themes included All-American Week, Under the Sea Week, Outer Space Week, and Summer Olympics. This added fun and imaginative elements to their academic experience. A special thanks to the Quincy Recreation Department for providing students the opportunity to visit the Lincoln Hancock Community School Pool, where they learned important water safety and awareness skills. Additionally, thank you to the generosity of Granite Telecommunications. Students had an unforgettable experience exploring the Museum of Science in Boston, where they were able to dive deeper into the wonders of science and discovery. Overall, it was a fantastic summer at Snug Harbor, where students not only strengthened their academic and STEM skills, but also made lasting memories and friendships.
Shifting gears to middle school programming. The Summer Boost Program took place at Central Middle School, grades, students entering grades six through eight. We had approximately 90 students participate in the Summer Boost Program this summer. They covered pre-algebra concepts along with basic problem solving in math. They conducted daily hands-on activities and investigations in science. They honed their literacy skills through reading and persuasive writing workshops. And in social studies, they explored the history of the Olympics and researched a country from the Olympics of their choice. Again, that Summer Boost taking place at Central Middle School, but also at Central Middle School. We had Swell Academy taking place. So 86 students ultimately had the opportunity to practice their comfort level using the English language in real-life scenarios. And that's what Swell is all about. Getting those students the opportunity to practice their language skills that they work on throughout the school year and obviously beyond the school year. Multiple field trips occurred. You can see the pictures there. They visited the City Hall. They visited the Boston State House along with the Blue Hills Trailside Museum. And I do just want to highlight, you know, when we talk about the objective of this program, trying to give English language learners opportunities to use their language in real-life settings, we're really lucky to be able to provide the rich history of Quincy as the backdrop in which they do that. So that's just, you know, an amazing attribute to this program for these students. And we're very lucky and it's worth noting. So Central was a busy school this summer. We also had hands-on math. I've said this many times before, but to be a broken record here, this one is definitely near and dear to my heart. As a former algebra teacher, I know firsthand as a former teacher how hard it is to help students get to that comfortable level of understanding the abstract concepts of algebra. And so many students struggle with that. I struggled with that as a learner, as a student, eventually, you know, became a teacher of it. But what makes that possible is allowing students to access those thoughts, those principles, those concepts in a concrete manner, to a pictorial manner, and then eventually back to the abstract. So we're able to help students using their hands with materials like hands-on equations and also hands-on projects to help them improve and remediate their math skills. So as they move on to their next grade, that algebra foundation is there. And it helps them prepare for the years to come. STEM Academy, you'll notice an ongoing theme throughout all of these summer programs, Hands-On, Hands-On, Hands-On. You'll hear that a lot because we want to make sure these programs are engaging and enriching for our students. And STEM Academy is certainly no exception to that. So that's a slightly shorter program that's offered in two-week-long sessions. Nice opportunity for students to try testing out the things they're learning by building, right? So they'll build a bridge, they'll build, I believe they made ice cream this summer. And also, of course, you can't have a summer without an Egg Drop Challenge, you know, where, you know, it's not a full, a complete summer without it. So they get to ask questions about the concepts they're learning and test the results out with the structures they're building. So it's an inquiry-based approach for our students. And it's a great opportunity. And if you talk to any of those students, they loved it. And that was 53 students over those two sessions. Again, all at Central Middle School, under the leadership of Michelle Cuniff and Nancy Sariani. Then we also had the Quincy Summer Theater Arts Academy. This was for students rising into grades seven up to nine. So part middle school, part entry of high school. We had 34 students participate in this program. It's a nice afternoon program. So they can participate in other summer programming during the day, but it allows them the opportunity to explore all things theater. And by all things, it's not just the improv skills, the acting, the singing, and the dancing, but it's the behind-the-scenes work. So it's the stage design, the tech setup to put on a performance, along with the writing. All of this culminated into just a mini musical which focused around community. Shifting gears to high school. The Summer Pathways to Success. We had 134 students gain the opportunity to recover at least one course worth of credits, if not more than that, over the summer. So helping students get back on track to ensure that ultimately they can graduate on time or as in timely a manner as possible. I do want to point out, of the 134 students, we had 89 participate in person and 45 participated online. However, those 45 were invited at all points for in-person support. So if they were struggling, it allowed us a more flexible opportunity for students who might need to be able to still recover those credits from home. But if they need to just speak to a QPS professional, they have that opportunity at Quincy High School as well. So as a result, 134 students were able to recover a good portion of their credits. That's for students entering 10 through 12. We had Patrick Lane, he facilitated that once again, did a great job. And I do just want to point out, we, this was our first summer using a new platform for credit recovery. So prior to this summer, it had been Acelis. This year, we've shifted gears to Edgenuity, which is a software owned by Imagine Learning. Great, great program, very successful. We're still getting used to that. We're still learning it, but it didn't seem to stand in the way in any way. So just pointing that out, if you hear Edgenuity, that's the credit recovery program. Once again, Ladders to Success was a success. We had 32 students entering ninth grade, led by five peer leaders, five teachers. This was facilitated by Natalie Valente. It ran from July 8th to August 8th. I mentioned this when we talked about our planning. I just think it's worth highlighting because we had students focus in on entrepreneurship, on employment, on all skills needed when you think career. And while they're getting this foundation, this, this opportunity to learn so much about what it means to start a business, to run a business, to be an employee of a business, they also were compensated. And so students had the opportunity to earn $16 per hour, up to 110 total hours. That's per kid, which, which brings them up to $1,760 that they could have earned over the summer. I say could have because some may not have worked the full hours, but all students that participated in this program, depending on their schedule, had that opportunity. So it's a great program. Once again, we continue to see that program do great things for our students. Summer Youth Works, 125 students in grades nine through 12. Total staff was six, along with Mr. Benson as a facilitator. We had 30 community business partners. The job placements, this is really what makes the program so successful. In addition to the funds that these students can earn over the summer, we just have a wide variety of offerings for our students to gain exposure into different industries, into different work settings. So not only are they earning money for themselves throughout the summer, but they're gaining exposure to a potential career path. And I just think that's so, so impressive that we're able to offer that to so many students in the city of Quincy. As I said, 125 students were able to take advantage of that. And I do just want to highlight that 30 of those students were part of the Summer Youth Works Institute, which means not only were they participating in Youth Works part-time, but they were also participating in early college programming over the summer, too. So balancing undergraduate courses along with a part-time job, which is so important. Just want to take a moment to recognize our partners. I'm certainly not going to list all of those for you, but I think it's worth at least putting them on there and thanking them. Part of what makes this so great is the variety of opportunity these students have. And a lot of thought goes into what these students, where these students are placed. So they have a voice in that process, too, depending on their interests as well. So between the local businesses throughout the city, the nonprofits, it's really just a tremendous opportunity for so many different kids within the Youth Works program. And then when we look at the early college pathway, as I said, we had 30 students that were balancing Youth Works along with this early college, high school pathway, Summer Academy. 210 students completed this program. 110 of them were students entering grades 10, 11, and 12, while 30 of them were recent graduates of QPS. And I do just want to point out, 105, so half of the students chose to take more than one class, to point out, 105, so half of the students chose to take more than one class, which I think says a lot about our students, right? Over the summer, when they could just be relaxing all summer, half of them decided to max the course offering that they had available to them. And I think that's impressive. Depending on the courses they chose, they could earn anywhere from six to eight credits, up to six to eight credits for the summer. I do, for the programs I just mentioned with Youth Works, Summer Academy, I do just want to acknowledge the Human Resources Department under Alison Cox's leadership. All of these students need to be onboarded as employees because they're being compensated. And so that's, you know, you think about the amount of students I just said, that's roughly over 300 students that need to be onboarded so that they can be compensated. So that's our Human Resources Department that's often doing the work behind the scenes, making that possible. So it's just important to acknowledge, you know, Ms. Cox and her department as we see success in these programs. Before we move our, move our way into PD, I want to hand it over to Ms. Larry to talk about our special education programming.
Hey, thank you. I'm going to highlight the special education programs that we ran this summer, all in accordance with students on IEPs and the services that were written into their IEPs for the summer. First of all, our pre-K level cares and learning center programs. This program was very exciting this summer because they're our first students who attended school in the new Dr. Richter Christopher Learning Center. So we ran a summer program there with a smaller number of students than are currently attending there. So we got to do dry runs on drop-off pickup buses, all of those things, get used to the classroom spaces and use of the building. So this program was very exciting for us this year because we were able to utilize that beautiful brand-new space that we've spent so much time and effort on. The goal of this program and all of our special education programs is to help our students maintain the skills outlined in their IEPs. So they had the opportunity to build their pre-academic skills, daily living skills, social skills, and received their therapies as well. So speech and language therapy, occupational therapy, and physical therapy were all part of the programming. We had 81 students in our pre-K and rising kindergarten program, which was facilitated by Danielle Perry. And we had 55 teachers, paraprofessionals, and therapists who serviced the students in this program. Wasn't all just work towards their IEPs. These students also got to participate in many fun activities. Again, Joe's Crazy Critters came. You can see the students playing with the snakes and the lizards and turtles and all of those critters that came out to visit. The Quincy Fire Department very kindly brought a fire engine down for the kids to play on and drive. And then you can see a lot of the hands-on learning activities that the students did. So practicing some pre-writing strokes and shaving cream on the table, social skills, and playing together with other students. For our rising first graders through 12th graders, they participated in our, our cares and learning center students, as well as our middle school, a language development center students, and a social skills group for some older students, all participated at the Southwest Middle School. We had close to 200 students enrolled in the program there, which was facilitated by Tracy Phelan and Thomas Whitaker. In that program, we had 72 teachers, paraprofessionals, and therapists, again, providing services as outlined in a student's IEP in order to maintain their academic skills, social skills, daily living skills, and their therapies. The program at North was a lot of fun. They did a lot of different activities. They had weekly Wednesday themes. Drums Alive came in to run programming with the students. That's the drumming on the exercise ball you see up there in the top-left corner. Some of our students went on a bowling field trip. They had a touch-a-truck event. Joe's Crazy Critters also visited the older students. And they also had a field day with an ice cream party. So lots of fun activities happened at Southwest this summer. And then we also had a special education program over at the Clifford Marshall School. This was for students who had participated in our transitional kindergarten, language development class, and Stars classes at the elementary level, rising grades one through five. Again, focusing on maintenance of skills in their IEPs. Joe's Crazy Critters was very busy with us this summer. He was, also visited them. And then you can see, again, the hands-on learning activities that the students were doing, building those towers together, playing together, building those social skills, as well as maintaining their academic skills.
Okay. And we also just wanted to use this opportunity to quickly recap all the professional development taking place this summer. A lot of work behind the scenes on the part of many QPS educators, and it's worth noting and acknowledging. So first, we, we had middle school teachers explore investigating history. So that was, the goal there is to understand the curriculum enough where we can feel comfortable piloting it. So we're not at a full implementation, but we're certainly piloting it. And throughout the year, so we have two system-wide PD days for middle school where we will focus on how the piloting of those units went and what we want that to look like for next year. So this is an ongoing initiative. However, it started this summer, and we look forward to piloting the investigating history curriculum. That's for social studies and also for Open Sayad, similar, right? So this is the science curriculum that we explored. We had middle school teachers throughout, throughout the city, all five middle schools, pick a unit, explore all the units, but pick a unit to pilot, at least one unit. So some teachers are piloting two. But we're having pilots of different units for Open Sayad taking place. And similarly to the format of investigating history, we're going to be touching base with all of the teachers across science and social studies during the upcoming system-wide days to make sure we're moving forward as a district, as a team. So a lot of great work over the summer there. And then also curriculum mapping. So with the frameworks that have been renewed over the years, we wanted to make sure that our curriculum maps, particularly at the high school level, were up-to-date and also aligned so that the units of instruction across both high schools are consistent. And so that's, we started that process. We have more work to do, but I'm proud to say we were able to map out fully-aligned curriculum maps for 22 different courses across different programming, across different subjects. So a lot of teachers putting in a lot of work over the summer to make sure that from a curriculum standpoint, we're providing the best high-quality materials for our students. And so next, I'll hand it over to Ms. Vaughn to talk about structured literacy, excuse me, literacy mini-course.
Thanks, Mr. Marani. So we're in a good place English language art, arts-wise with curriculum. So what I was thinking about, you know, we were talking about what to offer during the summer. Dr. Perkins and I had several conversations, and I talked with a lot of staff and sent out a survey. And they wanted to kind of learn more about the why behind what they were doing. So they, you know, had all the training with the new curricula. So we thought we would, would try the structured literacy mini-course, and it was really successful. So on August 26th and 27th, we offered a structured literacy mini-course based on Orton Gillingham principles. This professional development opportunity was open to all educators K to eight, interested in deepening their understanding of structured literacy or seeking a refresher on these vital instructional techniques. We were thrilled to have 62 educators from all 16 K to eight schools participate. The course was led by Lisa Brooks from Commonwealth Learning's Professional Training Institute, and we've used Commonwealth Learning to do our Orton Gillingham formal training as well. She expertly guided attendees through key topics such as the simple view of reading and Scarborough's reading rope. Participants also explored diagnostic and prescriptive teaching strategies grounded in Orton Gillingham principles. Additionally, the course covered essential areas such as phonological skill development, the role of phonemic awareness in decoding and spelling, and early phonics concepts like phonograms and syllable types. The course directly aligns with the Quincy Public Schools ELA instructional vision, and feedback from participants was overwhelmingly positive. One educator shared, "This training was extremely beneficial. It provided me with practical strategies I can use in my classroom and share with parents immediately." Another commented, "This was fantastic. It was served as a great refresher on the importance of teaching phonics explicitly and sequentially. I feel more confident in my instruction and better equipped to use the CKLA curriculum to benefit my students." So overall, the structured literacy mini-course was a tremendous success, providing educators with valuable tools and knowledge to enhance their literacy instruction. And I will pass it over to Ms. Quinn.
So our new K to five math teachers participated in two training sessions this summer. The first gave them the overview of the digital platform for illustrious mathematics, which houses all the resources. So this gave them the opportunity to go into the platform and find all the places and all the resources, get an overview of all the resources that were there for them, as well as how to find them. And then the second dove into the structure and pacing of the lessons of illustrious mathematics. So they got an overview of, you know, for many, illustrious mathematics is a very different type of curriculum, and they got an overview of how that lesson is spaced out, how to pace it, and were able to ask any questions and kind of get them started with diving into that new curriculum. In August, our schools using ST Math through the 1-8 grant, each sent a representative to their champion day. And here, participants took part in various breakout sessions. They got to choose, there were three different breakout sessions, and each champion got to choose which ones they went to. Some of the breakout sessions included making connections between core curriculum and ST Math, and another was launching and supporting ST Math in grades K to one, tried and true tips from teachers in earlier cohorts. So the teachers found this very informative because we're in cohort six and seven. And so there were many teachers there from cohorts, the first five cohorts who have done this and have, you know, been through all the, the challenges that comes with trying to fit a program into the day that's already jam-packed. So they found that this was really helpful to actually get to talk to other teachers from other districts that had been using it, and the best ways that they were finding that worked for them. And we also had teachers participate in a three-day sheltered English immersion refresher course through the Foxborough Summer Institute. The course covered integrating language and literacy development into content area instruction for multilingual learners. It also addressed instructional planning and assessment for meeting the needs of individual learners in the general education setting. And I'll pass it on to Jen Larry.
Over, we've presented to you several times about the new Massachusetts IEP forum that is rolling out this fall. So we had trained most of our special education staff during the school year last year, but I also offered three training opportunities over the summer. So I had approximately 45 staff members come in over the summer to do some refresher training for existing staff, and had a lot of our new staff members that we hired over the summer come into those trainings as well. So I had about 45 people that we just kind of did a refresher on to get everybody ready to roll out that new IEP. Also, in the special education department, we ran the Well Behavior Safety Management training. Again, this is that new behavior management program that we're implementing at the RDLC with the students there. We offered several sessions over the summer for the RDLC teachers, therapists, and paraprofessionals. And we have ongoing training for the pre-K staff as well. So we had one last week. We had one today. I heard really incredible positive feedback from the people who have attended that training about the trainer herself and the skills that they learned in that training. So we're really excited to be able to implement this program over in the new school. And then we also had training for the Unique Learning System. As you remember, this is the core curriculum resource that we're using over at the RDLC. The staff were all in person for this training, and the trainer was remote because it is a technology-based program. So the trainer was able to remote in and work with our staff who were there in person to learn how to use the program. And again, it's not just a technology-based program. There's lots of opportunities to use the technology in the building, such as smartboards and iPads and Chromebooks, but there are also paper-based and hands-on activities that the teachers can use with students as well.
So with that, we, of course, want to thank all staff and students for making this summer such a successful one. But we also want to thank each of you without your support, both in the resources, but also just in acknowledging how important it is to make sure our summer is equally, if not more, enriching and engaging for our students as compared to our school year. It's, it's great to be a member of the SLT, knowing that we have so many people that value the summer programming. So we thank you, and we open it up to any questions or comments that you have.
Thank you. That was wonderful. Great presentation. Just too quick, when the new teachers, the teachers that are being trained on the new IEP, how many more still are in need of being trained on that? Are there a lot, or have most of already been done?
Most of the special education staff has already been done, but we know that we have some new people who haven't been, or, you know, people who may have been out sick on a day we offered training. So we're definitely going to have ongoing training to help support people through this process. And I also think as we start actually using the forum, we're going to have questions that come up that we're going to have to work through and provide some more training for.
Thank you. And just want to add that I love the Bridge to Reading program. I think it's fabulous. My son took advantage of it when he was in school there. So it's a fabulous program. So thank you so much for continuing that.
Mr. Bragoli?
Mr. Marani, on the high school-level credit recovery program, how many courses can they recover?
How many courses can they recover? We try to make sure that it's not more than two at a time. If they complete more and they're taking advantage of Edgenuity, they can go beyond that if they complete those two. So we wouldn't go beyond two. So I would say generally, successful students who took advantage completed two courses over the summer.
That really hasn't changed.
I would say that's pretty typical, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, I've already had questions from parents saying, "What are the dates for next year's summer work?" They want to make their summer plan. So if you could take care of that right away.
Absolutely. Well, right on.
I'd like to know. The other thing is I want to say, this is really an amazing thing, but we're still using, we have been using ESSER funds for this. And we're going to have to think long and hard about this because we can't let it go. We can't let it go.
No pressure.
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Same, I just want to say thank you to the SLT for organizing all of this. And as you mentioned, HR onboarding all those kids is huge effort. So I know behind-the-scenes organizing that is enormous. And just the fact that it's free for all of our families is so fantastic. And it's, it's just really, really great. And it really makes you proud to be part of our system. And just also a special thank you to the 279 educators that gave a part of their summer to be there for our kiddos and just keep trying to bring them to the next level and, and be there to support them. So thank you to them as well. My kids, you know, took part in the, the middle school theater program, and second year in a row that we've offered that, and it, second year in a row that it's been fantastic. Mr. Dusette, Ms. Comp, and Mr. Bold did a great, great job. So I can kind of personally speak on that one. And it's just so, so great to see these kids take, you know, a concept all the way through production in just two weeks. And it's really amazing. And I may need to take the hands-on math next year because I still struggle with algebraic concepts. So I may need to, to pop in on that class and see if I can refresh
Absolutely.
my, my skills. So thank you all for
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I just want to say I'm impressed with the diversity of the offerings and that you all just continue to innovate and blown away by the numbers, not, not only of, of the students, which is a credit to all of you and what you're offering, but also to the teachers and staff that come out and participate in that and help out. It's just a great asset that we have here in Quincy that you guys have really done a remarkable job putting together. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great program. Okay. And, get these off. Next on our agenda, we have a school committee organizational meeting. So what we have first is the school committee goals. We had met with Jim Harding from the Mass Association of School Committees, and we had a session where we sat and we did some draft goals. So to follow up on that, we will be setting up another meeting where we can sit and prioritize and go over the, the goals that we have. The next piece of that would be the school committee connections to the DIP. There's a form with, you know, in your packet, and it basically just gives you a little bit of a rundown of what each committee and subcommittee is kind of connected to within the school and, and the responsibilities and some of the, the things that we need to be cognizant of within each subcommittee. So that gives you a little bit of a breakdown. And the next piece that we need to do is review of the items in subcommittee, which we'll just review them. And each chair can kind of discuss if they want to leave an item within the, the subcommittee or feel like we've completed that task and be able to take it out of the subcommittee roles. So the first one we have is the athletics and wellness. Chair Bragoli, do you have any, we have the helmets for girls in lacrosse, middle school athletics, training and evaluation of athletic coaches. Would you like to leave those three in?
Yes, I would. Have a, a, a subcommittee meeting fairly soon regarding a couple of those issues.
Okay.
Particularly the evaluation of coaches and helmets for girls lacrosse, again.
Okay. So we'll leave all three of those things in there. Budget and finance, Mayor Koch, would you like to review anything in there that you think we want to leave in or take out?
I'm just taking a peek now. I think some of the stuff where we can come off. I mean, the employee leadback, I think that's more, it's less of a financial issue. It's more of a contractual issue. That would be negotiation stuff. So that suggests we take that one out. The ESSER funding expenditures, I think we talked about enough. I think that can come out. We can leave three and seven in because I know we've had some discussions on the fees, on the whole DEI concept. Why are we charging for some things and not other things? So I think it's maybe time we look at the elimination of athletic fees. So we can leave those in there. I don't think we need the athletic apparel equipment still in there. We can raise that again in the future.
Pardon?
Your item in here, the purchasing of athletic apparel and equipment. I think we can deal with that as, yeah. So we can strike that one.
There is something else.
Well, we can raise that.
Put that in the next, the next round.
I'm good.
Leave the other things?
Yeah, I guess we'll leave the other stuff for now.
Could you just review which ones we're taking out? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
One, two, and four.
One, two, and four. Thank you.
So we have the EDI, and when I review that, I think that we will be leaving one through eight because they're really ongoing, ongoing items, things that we do all the time. And basically, we'll be having updates throughout the year between the different other committees. We'll be updating us, or our EDI committee will be updating on some of these practices. So, oh, sorry.
There you go. So one through eight, we'll leave in. They're ongoing. Nine leave in, 10 we can leave in. Chronic absenteeism, we'll leave it in because, again, that's also something that's ongoing that is being addressed at all times. The last one would be 12, the safest. I think we reviewed that last year, and, you know, we found out that that was something that has to be done at the facilities that do the fingerprinting have to be done specifically.
Could we just, could we keep it in just to get an update on, there was supposed to be a document
There was supposed to be a document that is going to be going out to PTOs just clarifying which events need to have the fingerprinting and which do not. So just until that's kind of wrapped up and that document is created and sent out, can we keep it in there until that's done, and then?
Who's doing that?
I believe Dr. Perkins is taking care of that for us. Oh, okay. So is that all done? So, all right, well, then. Okay.
So we're all set?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, and I think that's good for me. Next would be facilities, security, and transportation.
So back in the day, we used to do this meeting as a workshop, and I found that very helpful. And I don't feel comfortable taking anything off of my committee without Mr. Drakeio having reviewed it with us. So I'm going to leave everything on here until I can have a talk with him about the items that are on here. So I'm not removing anything.
Okay. Policy, Mr. Guttrow.
Through you, Madam Vice Chair, to Laura. Have we disposed of any of these that are pending?
We could remove thirteen and fifteen. I think those were voted on.
Thirteen, so we can remove those.
And everything else is still active?
Yeah, number eleven, was that dealt with? Mr. Mayor? Or Superintendent?
We've taken no action on that.
Okay, no, okay. I don't know if you want to keep that, or? So keep it. Does any of the other folks that have introduced a matter that's pending in policy subcommittee want to remove it or retain it?
I think we, did we do the wellness policy at the end of last year? We didn't?
We did not. We did a lot of help also.
We did a lot of help, yeah.
Okay.
Please.
I updated the website. We have some, had some new features added to the website. So I've got sections one through seven posted in the new format and working on the rest of the sections. But in doing that, I've identified some other places, because I'm really looking at things where we might need future updates. So I will be, have some suggestions. Also, places where I've done a comparison between the mask policy book and our policy book, places where they have a policy that we don't have. And for example, so two, there's following this item on the agenda, there's two referrals, one of which surfaced during the application process for the DeChristophero Learning Center. So there'll be more to come. We'll be adding more to the list.
I'm sorry, is this whole thing falling on you? To revise the whole policy book?
So it's, so I'm only identifying places that I think need to be identified, so, yes. But it's an interesting process, because I know we've talked about the mask policy book versus ours, and we have things in our book that they don't have that previous school committees, you know, decided were important to have. So there's a little bit of back and forth thing.
Yeah.
So.
It's just a lot of work. I mean, I'm so grateful it's being done, but it's a lot of work for you.
It's in better shape now than it has, than it has been in a while.
She needs an assistant. Or two.
Does any other member have an item that they've introduced that they want to remove from policy committee? If not, we'll keep it as is?
No, I'm good. Anyone else?
Very good. Thank you.
And post-audit, nothing there. Special education, Mrs. Pardios.
I think, I think we can keep all of those items in. There's five there. The Learning Center, I think it's good to be getting regular updates on how that's been going as it opens and expands to new students. I think the special education transportation should stay there just to the issues that Superintendent Malvi brought up, just to make sure we're staying on top of the transportation there. Staff training, we talked about that tonight, so I think that's still relevant. And special education communication, I think, is always relevant. New IEP, I know we received a presentation on what that was going to be, but I think it's important to keep that in there until we see how the rollout has gone and the response to it has gone. So I think I'd like to keep them all in there, if that's okay, unless anyone has any objections.
And Mrs. Lebo.
Yeah, I'm fine with all these. The first one is actually one of our goals for our school committee goals. We've identified that as one of our goals. I would love to see us to have the opportunity to have an immersion program. We can leave it in there to see if there's ever some golden way that we could do something like that. It would be a wonderful thing. Yeah, so there's nothing here. I think it's really important to look at the before-school childcare program issue. I think a lot of our parents are struggling. And I think even the situation with the buses shows that. Because I was actually stuck behind a school bus on Old Colony Ave with its thing out, because the parent never came out the door. And, you know, who knows why the parent, I'm not blaming the parent. I don't know why they parent. But we were there on both ends of the street, both going in both directions, without an ability to pass.
We run into that. After a class with the parents, it works out.
But I do think it's important to talk about the before-school help. If we can talk to Q cares about that and maybe find a way to do it in some of our buildings, it would be great. Even on social media, I see all these parents saying, "I'm new to the city, and I got to be at work at such and such a time." And people are trying to find people to pick their kids up just to take them to school so they can go to work. It's an issue, so I would like to see that on there. So I'm fine with all of these. I think the AI one is very, very important. I know we had a good look at that last year. And we are going to hear about the adjustment counselors. I think they're going to come and see us this, so we can get a little better idea of what they do. So I'm good.
Okay. Very good. Yes.
I just wanted to ask in general on these, do we have any kind of? I guess I'm a little unclear as to, so some of these items kind of tend to sit in here, and I know some of them, they're not always relevant to bring up at every subcommittee, every time the subcommittee meeting, every time the subcommittee meets. But should we, is there an expectation that we're going to talk about each of these regularly? I mean, or some of the, I just don't want them to kind of die in subcommittee? And is there ever any kind of expectation that we're going to talk about it X number of times a year, or at least once a year, just to bring it up? Any thoughts on that from?
I don't, I don't know if I'm correct, and, you know, Laura and the superintendent can maybe let me know, but if there's something in here that I think that we want to see move forward, and it's really important to one of us as a chair, that we could ask to have it put on the agenda for one of our meetings so that we can really delve into it. A lot of them might be issues that are reported to us within our, you know, our meetings. You know, the staff might be coming up and reporting on some of these things, because they're ongoing anyway. But I think if we have a big slate in the subcommittees, I think it's important for us to kind of take a look at them and determine pushing them forward, you know, when we, because we think we have to talk about them and get them passed, if it's something that needs to be passed.
Right. I guess I'm just, like, I'm just going to use a total, just an example of this on teaching and learning, the American Sign Language. I referred that the last time I was on the committee, three years ago. And it's not a pressing matter. It's not something that we need to, you know, push forward immediately, but it doesn't really ever come up on an agenda. So what's the sense of it just sitting there for three years? Is there ever any expectation that we're going to be talking about that? Is kind of what I'm saying. Are we expecting the chairs to kind of be regularly talking about these at least once a year? Or are there any thoughts from anybody on that, just so things don't sit there forever? Right, and that's?
I think they do. And it's unfortunate. I think, you know, we looked into doing this when I was teaching American Sign Language. So that was like in nineteen eighty-seven, eighty-nine, ninety. And it became very difficult. I mean, the Director of Curriculum at the time was sort of like freaking out about whether it could be even done. So, I mean, we have looked into it before. It's, you'd have to have, it's like what happens with the middle school foreign language. If you don't have enough kids choosing it, you can't really pay a teacher to teach it. You know what I mean?
I just mean, like, should that come out? I mean, if we've looked at that this year and we say, oh, we don't have enough interest or someone to teach it, maybe we take it out, as opposed to it just sitting there year after year.
I'm fine taking that out.
Well, I don't, I put it in there, so I don't want to take it out. I'm just saying I'd like us to talk about it. But aside from, like, forcing the chair to bring it forward, like, how does?
That's what we're doing now. I think that's part of the organizational meeting.
Okay.
We could be talking about it now. But it's a difficult thing. You see what happens with the middle school math. I mean, it's like foreign language. You know, can't offer French at that school, because only fifteen kids wanted French. Everybody else wanted Spanish, and we can't hire a teacher to teach one lesson, or we have to have a teacher that's traveling all across the city trying to teach French. It's very difficult.
Yeah, I think it's more the French teachers, hiring the French teachers, than it is the kids not wanting it, and that aspect, I think.
I think that there's an uneven, well, Erin would know better than that.
Anyway, sorry.
I don't know, I mean, from my perspective, I think if it's something that's really important and you want to push it forward, we talk to a chair and say, "Can we really look at this?" Doesn't mean it's going to happen, because then it's going to be an issue of researching, whatever that might be, and what the viability is of something happening, you know? But what I would do if it was something that was interesting to me is, you know, maybe I'd call a chair and say, "Can we really take a good look at this in a subcommittee and discuss, you know, the viability of whatever it might be?"
Okay.
And if not, leave it there, because at some point in time, it might be something we can look at.
Okay. I just wanted to see the viability of not kind of, like, to Mrs. Lebo, just letting things die in there, so, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Okay, wait, I got off my page. So the next thing on our agenda is the motor vehicle idling on school grounds. Mr. Guttrow.
These are two items that are going to subcommittee. The next two items, C and D, motor vehicle idling on school grounds. Make a motion to refer to policy subcommittee, ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's in the subcommittee, and then is that, that's what we're doing, correct? We're just?
If I may on that, I was going to say, that really kind of should go combo in with safety and security. I kind of think that should be in that.
Dual reference.
Yeah, I think it should be under both.
Makes sense.
Maybe with policy, but also it's a safety issue as well.
And then the second is policy book nine point two, school year and school calendar. Mrs. Lebo, refer to policy subcommittee, make a motion and a second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to subcommittee.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we all set with that? Okay. School nurse appointments. We were going to need, we are going to need a roll call vote. Two of the resumes are attached. Victoria Fallon for Clifford Marshall and Caitlin Crowley.
Is there one vote for both, or we individually?
We have to do both, yeah.
Can I make the motion to approve Victoria Fallon for the actual?
Second by Mr. Brigoli. Roll call vote.
Mr. Brigoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pardios?
Yes.
And Mayako?
Yes. I'd make a motion Caitlin Crowley be appointed as a nurse for the Dr. Rick Christopher Learning Center.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Hubley. Roll call.
Mr. Brigoli? Yes. Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pardios?
Yes.
And Mayako?
Yes. And for the public, that's one of the few things the school committee directly appoints. Superintendent.
Look at us.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the consent agenda,